Are you okay, Mayor? Oops, I can't hear you. I don't know if anybody else can.
Um, I have a nasty. I just have a really nasty cough at the end. Yep, I'm just coughing.
Oh, boy, yeah, it does sound nasty. I hope it gets better.
Um, Madam Mayor, it is nine oh two and we are live.
Good morning and good morning, everyone, and welcome to the city of Lake Worth Beach. A gen- pre-agenda meeting of September twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
I'm gonna mute myself, yes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Sarah Maliga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May had a conflict and is absent. Commissioner Anthony Segrich.
Present.
I'm in the middle, I'm on my cellphone, which is often harder. I'm in the middle of a coughing jag, so I'm gonna ask my Vice Mayor to take over, so I just can go on mute.
Get better.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Um, so let's start. Does anybody have anything that they want to talk about for Tuesday, September sixteenth, um, agenda that's coming up?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Um, I, I believe we've all received, um, from resident or group of residents, a draft ordinance relating to local law enforcement. Um, you may have also received, uh, an article or two that seemed relevant that I ran into this week. One of them, I heard from the mayor, uh, seems to be stuck behind a paywall, which is annoying. Um, but, um, uh, I'm looking for consensus to, eh, at least add it to the agenda, the Tuesday agenda on an emergency basis for discussion. Um, this is something, the issue of, of law enforcement of various flavors in our city has been brought to our attention by a number of residents for about a month now, and, um, the mayor asked for some direction from residents or contributions or something, which, um, the draft ordinance is some of that direction. So I would like us to add that to, um, the Tuesday meeting as an emergency addition for discussion.
I just want to clarify, uh, when Penny Darling was up there, she said, she, I, she said they hadn't, I said, you know, send it to us, let's go for a look. I didn't overtly sneakish. Penny Darling came to us with that.
Okay, I, I, I don't remember the exact discussion, but I remember there was public comment and a, a comment from the mayor to Penny, exactly what it was, you would recall better than I. In any case, you know, there, it, it is an issue that is very pressing, that has been brought to the commission's attention, that there is a good deal of fear and anxiety and effect on kids, effect on school enrollment, effect on families, um, and we have some latitude to do things. I see that other cities are doing things, even Congress is considering some of the elements that I saw in that ordinance. So again, I would like us to add that as a, um, an addition for discussion. Looking for consensus.
Any.
Sorry.
Anthony, Mayor, anybody? Go ahead, Anthony, I see your hands up.
Uh, thank you. Um, there, there are some things in that, that ordinance are pretty generic, just statements of, of truth, like we condemn violence and mistreatment of, of individuals. There's also things in that ordinance that border on trying to instruct the police not to follow the law. And I'm not comfortable with that.
And I, I don't see it as, I mean, in, in any event, I don't see it as an emergency add-on. I mean, aside from the other, the, the substance of it, I don't see it as an emergency add-on.
Um, I have to agree, I don't see it as an emergency add-on, and since we just got it yesterday, um, number one, I'd want to really read through it and dissect it more thoroughly. Um, and then I'd also like to get Legal's opinion on it and make sure that there's not a conflict of interest with the contract that we have with PBSO. And just clarify, I mean, obviously, we want to protect our residents and let everyone know that we, you know, we stand against police brutality of all, and I'll speak for myself, on all the cards, but I think that this is not an emergency, but I think that it's something that we should dissect and look into and give our individual thoughts back to staff and then go from there. Oh, there's Legal, I see Elizabeth's hands up.
Could someone send it to me to look at?
Can do right now. Thank you.
Um, and I do need to offer.
Is my voice? Go ahead.
Uh, I do need to offer a, a clarification of fact. Um, this was received by all of the commission on September fifth. It was not received yesterday. It was received by the city manager and all of the commission on September fifth, which is a week ago, so.
Correct. Mine says yesterday that I received it yesterday at uh, September eleventh at four oh nine P M. Thank you.
Uh, that bears looking into, because it was, uh, this, it was sent.
Mr. McVoy, I'm not gonna argue with you. I'm telling you, I have the email. If you want to do a public records request, you can. It was sent from Father Frank to me at four oh nine yesterday.
And no, it was sent by Penny Darling on September fifth. Check your records, because I see who was copied on it and all of us were on it.
Whether or not, what, it's sort of immaterial. I don't think there's consensus to add it as an emergency.
Okay, what, how do you want to add it?
I, I just gave, I just said, we could just, I just sent it to Elizabeth. Elizabeth, you should have it. Let's see what staff says, and I think that we should all give our one-on-one opinions to Jamie and to Legal, and then come back around and have a conversation about it at the next pre-agenda meeting.
And I think we, we need to realize, and I can't, I don't know how to raise my hand, we need to realize that we don't operate in vacuum. And looking at what's going around the state, we, I don't know, I mean, again, I, I think we should look at it and see what we can do and what, what we don't feel comfortable with. But I also know that this, um, there's a real possibility with actions at this point of, number one, funding being withdrawn for very important infrastructure projects, and number two, this, uh, Tallahassee has removed people from public office, and they have won the appeal. So I think we have, you know, it's in, in terms of human kindness, it's one thing, but we do not operate in vacuum. And I just, I'm just saying that we need to be aware of that and, um, bear that in mind as we review this.
So, eh, if, if I'm understanding the commission, um, there is a, we do not wish to add it as an emergency item. We do not think it's an emergency, even though it's been raised by the community and indicated as such for over a month. Um, and we do not want to discuss it publicly. We want to discuss it, uh, others are suggesting that it be discussed individually. I think it needs to be a public discussion of what elements of this do we feel protect the public health and safety of our community, which is what we are primarily sworn to do.
Mr. McVoy, we don't have consensus to add it as an emergency item. We just said, let, let's ask Elizabeth and Legal for their advice, and if you, why don't you email staff, every one of us email staff our thoughts, so they have it collectively. Anybody else have anything else from the next, for, for the agenda?
Uh, yes.
Hang on, but let Mr. Segret go. You had, you had a bite of the apple. Mr. Segret, go for a minute.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, on the items that deal with parking, uh, and specifically overnight parking, um, I'm not looking at my book, so I don't have a particular reference number for you guys. Um, but I felt it was overly broad in that it, it just set an overnight set of hours for the entire city. And in my one-on-ones I had discussed with the city manager, there really is a need for it to be a little bit more, um, generic and empower the city manager as well as our parking division to establish different zones, um, different hours of what constitutes overnight parking are not allowed, allowed. Um, I don't have an exact, um, you know, set of verbiage to, to propose, but different things that we, we tossed around, we're, we're having zones that matched up with our paid parking zones, but also, you know, allowing it to be dictated by signage. Um, so, you know, I would like us all to think about before Tuesday, um, that particular section and ideas on how we can direct staff to empower, um, staff, but also signage to achieve the same goal, which is, you know, in certain areas, we can't have overnight parking. Um, and we need towing, uh, in certain areas, et cetera.
Thank you. I see Elizabeth's hands up. Is this in regards to that, Elizabeth?
It is, thank you. And I am, don't have things in front of me today either, but my recollection of that provision is that it is, the intent is that it would be based on signage in those locations, so it would be not throughout the city, but wherever the signage dictates.
Thank you.
And PBSO would be the enforcers, correct? Because it's after hours. It's not code. This is, you know, um.
And it's on the right.
Right. My understanding is that the parking division was working on ways to, uh, handle it remotely, um, but Tiana will have more information on that.
Is Tiana here?
No.
Hi, yes, I am here.
She is, she is.
I can follow up more on that on Tuesday, um, as far as, uh, overnight parking, um. Thank you.
Thank you. I also think that we should, um, make sure that, um, if we can maybe have the PIO push this agenda out in regards to parking, so we can have some community input before making these decisions, I think would be important. If, I don't know if we can have consensus for, uh, you know, a, the communication blitz. Um, give us your thoughts on, you know, on overnight parking, parking situations. I think that if we can start to bring more attention to our agendas on items like this, it'll make the entire process smoother with residents, business owners, and visitors when they're part of the conversation, not at the afterthought.
I'm, I'm supportive of, you know, more participation in the conversation.
Mr. Segret, did you have anything else?
I did. It wasn't related to the, the agenda. The one other agenda item is, I, I'd like to thank staff, um, and our consultants for their hard work on the parking design. And it, it was very nice to have, um, the complete presentation and backup, um, many days prior, which allows us to ask questions and digest everything in there, because it's an important project. My other item is, is not agenda-related, so it can wait until after those with agenda items.
Okay, does anybody have anything else for the agenda?
No, I just have two quick things for the non-agenda.
Why don't you go first, Mayor, in case your flight gets called?
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be nice? Okay, two things, and these both are kind of fun. Number one, on, you, you'll be getting an email on Thursday, um, at six o'clock at the Playhouse. It's the hundredth anniversary of the Playhouse, and I've arranged, you know, and, and when you look from the street, there's a plaque that says, Mrs. The Play, Mrs. Lincoln was produced. On the other side, it's a blank wall, and I've had a plaque in white, you know, to match it, put up with a little bit of the history of the theater and all of our names and the executive director and the chairman of the board, so the, open, and also the new seats are gonna be, um, ex, you know, shown then. So at six o'clock on Thursday, it's kind of a VIP, you know, uh, it's a ceremony, and I would love if all we, we could come, the unveiling will be then, and I really hope that all of us can be there. Number two. Yes?
That, that's a week from yesterday?
Uh, it's the eighteenth. Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Jonah, can you put that on our calendars?
And the second thing is, I was at a Royal Palm Beach meet, I was at a meeting of the Palm Beach County League of Cities the other day. Royal Palm Beach has just started a really cool thing, um, and I would, I'm looking for, you know, I've, I've given it to the staff and also I've called the principal. They're starting like a citizen slash government education thing. It goes from April, September till April to kids to learn how the city works, what government works, how, to, to get more involved. One of my pushes as mayor has been to involve our kids more, to get the kids at our high school, um, more involved and more feeling welcome, and it's part of our thing. So, um, I've given it, I'll, Jamie has it, and he can forward it to all of you. It's just, it's what the Royal Palm group is doing, and it's just kind of a, a prototype. The principal, Elena Valani, is extremely excited. She would love to have it happen at the school. So, um, that's what, that's my number two thing right now.
I support that, hundred percent. Mr. Segret?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, at our, our last EDU task force meeting, um, we did have a discussion. And when we looked at the budget, there is a fund that was set aside at some point, um, I believe it was seventy-five thousand dollars. In talking with the task force, um, I would like to get consensus to establish a grant structure with that, so that, um, schools can apply to receive some of those funds for their programs. Um, otherwise, um, it really won't work with the Department of Edu- Education and how everything needs to go. It, it does need to be, um, a grant program where the schools would apply to us as the city and funds could be dispersed out of that, and I would like us to get that on an, on a agenda at some point soon, so that, um, we can take advantage of that. Um, our schools have a drop in, um, attendance, and that's resulting in a loss of teachers, loss of funds. And, um, this could really help them out. The average teacher, I'm told, spends between seven hundred and a thousand dollars on their own classroom per year for simple vital things. So we've established that fund, um, and I would like consensus for us to get the wheels moving so that we can utilize it.
I have, I just, my, uh, I hate being on iPhone, and I apologize for barging in, but I don't know how to do this. Um, I would just, I, I think that's a great idea. I would like to see it, though, that we commit to doing it every, you know, every year. It's not, not like a one-shot deal. That it's something that they could count on, that we build that into a budget.
I, I would be in support of ever greening those funds, funds per year as well.
I think that that's a great idea. Um, I also think that it'd be a nice, if they have to have a, um, if they get a grant and they need matching dollars, they could help, you know, help fill that gap as well. I think that's a great idea. Um, Healthier Lake Worth Beach does have a great sponsorship application process. I can, um, connect you with with them, um, in regards to their sponsorship application, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's what they use for South Grade, for the kids to go into DC, um, as well as programs, so I can, um, I can get Carmel to forward that over to you, Anthony, if you'd like that.
Yes, that would be great.
Anything else, Anthony?
Well, oh, did, I just, I'm so sorry. Did we all get the email about High, um, Highland Elementary looking for funds for their Washington trip?
No, I didn't see that.
Yeah, they're, they're reaching out.
A while ago, maybe.
It was a week or two ago, um, uh, to, you know, to, just, you know, they're reaching out again. They want to get their kids to Washington, which I think the kids should, I think the government should pay every kid to go to Washington, but that's.
I would support that. I have to say, I do like the way that South Grade did it. The kids had to attend cleanups and put in community hours to earn the trip instead of just a gift. And I think that if we can, you know, start giving the kids in the community more ownership for stuff like that, I think it just helps build more responsible adults. Um, and, Mr. Segret, are you all done?
Uh, no, I, I had one, one other item.
Go ahead.
So, you know, recent national events have really highlighted the escalation in political violence that, that we've seen. And, um, an absolute tragedy to, to see someone who invited discourse be assassinated. Uh, whether you believe or agree with those political points or not, public discourse is essential. Recently, within our own little town of Lake Worth Beach, there's been a formation, um, I don't know if you guys are aware, of a social media group to docs Christians, people who support the police, people in law enforcement, conservative business owners, et cetera. Um, I've reported it, uh, to PBSO, um, and to city management. But I thought that you guys should be aware that there, there's an active group out there looking, you know, I can't imagine a reason why you would dock somebody and, and show pictures of their home and their home address if you didn't wish them some sort of harm or something. And, um, I'm publicly condemning that. And, you know, i- it's a shame to, to see the escalation of rhetoric and, and, you know, words have consequences. And as part of that, you know, I toiled with myself about, um, addressing some words that were said from the dais, and I feel that they need to be addressed, and Mr. McVoy was given, uh, a question from the mayor, um, in the other meeting as to whether or not he believed the accusations he leveled against his fellow commissioners in terms of accepting bribes. And I've heard online that, oh, Mr. McVoy wasn't actually accusing us of taking bribes, he was merely repeating the rumor that we were taking bribes. And to me today, and in this environment, I feel that's the same. Whether you accuse someone of doing something like taking a bribe or you perpetuate an unsubstantiated rumor of someone s- taking bribes, it's the same. And so I wanted to give Mr. McVoy the opportunity to address this, and, you know, I think it's a shame that he hasn't taken the opportunity to address it with us. Um, but I'm asking you today, Mr. McVoy, do you believe that your colleagues are taking bribes, and is that your accusation? Or are you merely hiding behind the accusations of others that are unstantiated? Or at this time, do you wish to apologize, and maybe it was the heat of the moment that drove you to say that? And I can understand people getting passionate about things, but I would like you to address this for us.
Um, I have some other items that are higher priority. I'll come back to that if we have time. Thank you.
Mr. McVoy, you, you, you're being asked a question by your colleague, and I think that out of all due respect, you could at least give an answer. There's, you know, we're sitting here, you know, he's asked a question. This is your opportunity, and if you, if you say no, then that, that gives us all an answer.
All right. I have business of the city, which we have been admon- uh, admonished to stick to business of the city.
Okay.
I have business items that I would like to raise. I will come back to the commissioner's question.
Mr. Segret, Elizabeth, you have an answer.
With all due respect, Mr. Commissioner, this is the business of the city.
And with all due respect.
On an item.
Okay, guys, guys, we're, we're not gonna do this. Um, we're just, you know, you've got your answer, Mr. Segret. He, he doesn't want to go on the record to substantiate or apologize. So just chalk that up as it is. Um, I'm gonna go now. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this privy to ask for support in staff and legal looking into creating the Lake Worth Beach pier as a historical landmark. According to the characteristics, the landmark has to have accessibility to the public, has to be of a certain age, usually more than thir- thirty years old, and possess a unique character of historical value to the city, state, or na- our nation. And I think that with all the things that we're doing and looking at at the beachfront right now, to create a historical landmark out of our Lake Worth Beach pier, um, would be something cool for the city. And it would also protect the pier from any further, um, destruction or anybody coming in and wanting to do anything with it. And I just thought that if we could get support for that, staff could look into the process, and I think Mr. Kelly could probably help us navigate the waters on how to apply for it, get the plaque, and put it on the National Registry for Landmarks. Do I have support?
Absolutely.
I, I would support that. I would want to make sure that it, it doesn't preclude us from certain repairs or improvements to it.
Of course it doesn't, yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's just, it's to prevent it from ever being destructed, you know, down the road. Mr. McVoy, do you have consensus?
Uh, I think that's a fine idea. I'm not sure that we would qualify, but you can, I have no problem with the idea of asking. Um, I do point out that we are in the process of demolishing, uh, buildings from our historic district and historic contributory structures.
That's not what I'm asking you. I'm asking about the pier specifically.
I am pointing out, as part of the business of the city, that it is ironic we would ask for historic protection, for one thing, while we are in the process of destroying other historic things in our city.
Sounds like I have consensus. Um, so I'll get with staff and see what we need to do to see if we qualify and move that forward.
That's fine.
Mr. McVoy, do you have anything concerning the agenda or things you want to bring forward?
Yes, thank you. I do have two. Appreciate the opportunity, three, actually. Um, we had, have had, uh, on our proposed agenda for a while, a discussion of our largest contract that with PBSO and, um, discussing how it's working, any adjustments we need. Um, that's been postponed several times. That concerns me, particularly in the current situation. I think we should have that discussion as soon as possible, and I'm asking for consensus that we put that back on the agenda at, at, I, I think it was last proposed as a special meeting or a workshop. I don't remember which. Um, uh, and it should be something with public comment, I think. Um, could we, could I get consensus that that be put back on the, the list of things?
Well, I think that Jamie's been working on getting a date. Is that correct, Jamie?
Oh, that's correct, and if, uh, I believe it's now official that October sixth, the date for the workshop, uh, let me double check here, um, for, uh, the potential charter amendment questions.
Yes.
Um, I can get with PBSO if everyone's okay with that and see if, uh, since we're doing that as a workshop anyway, if we can, or I'm sorry, special meeting, not a workshop, special meeting. If we can maybe add that as another, uh, item on that particular special meeting, since we already have one scheduled.
And that's at six P M. on, on that date, correct?
Six P M., uh, yeah, on October sixth. It's a Monday.
And that's for referendum?
Oh, yeah, potential charter amendment questions.
Okay.
It, is, is that gonna, given that I believe we talked about on the referendum, talking about each proposed item individually, I think that was the consensus out of the last meeting. Is there gonna be time to do both of those things?
Well, a special meeting isn't time constrained, so if those are the two items we have to get through, then we get through them. If, you know, if PBSO can do it, I think if we're gonna do it, that's, that's knocking out. Anybody else have a thought on that, Anthony?
I'm okay with that being in, in the same meeting.
Okay, so Jamie, you'll let us know?
Yeah, it shouldn't be an issue. I mean, we're, you know, it's over three weeks away, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, and again, let's just make sure we're doing a big push on, on that meeting for community input. Um, I'm, I'm on the referendum and the PBSO. Mr. McVoy, you have something else?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'm a little confused about the whole referendum election thing. Um, we discussed at the last meeting that we would each hold town halls. I believe that would be five of them, the mayor and four commissioners. Um, we have one booked so far. I have asked the city to, and we, we asked the city to help make the arrangements for those and publicize. Um, I've, I've put in my request also, um, we, the only one that's scheduled that I'm aware of at this point is at the casino, not in a particular district. Um, I have some questions about how this is gonna work. I also have some questions overall. It seems like we're in quite a bit of a rush to do this referendum and, um.
Well, that's because we have to get the information to the state. For March of election.
Eh, eh, right, we're in a rush to fit it on the March election. I understand the logistics of if we want it on the March election, um, then, uh, we need to do various steps to get it to the supervisor elections in time for that. My question is, what is the rush to get it on the March election? What is the cost to city of doing an election that we do not, we are not otherwise running? Um, and, uh, wh- wh- what is the rush to put it on the March one? I'm hearing from earlier in this meeting that looking out for the public health and safety of a substantial part of our community is not a rush or an emergency.
Come on.
Uh, that's what I heard. Did I misquote anybody?
Mr. McVoy, stop. Stick to the facts, so that's your question, please.
I believe I was simply quoting what I heard earlier in this meeting.
You weren't quote, you were not quoting anything. You're making rhetoric, and I'm not gonna tolerate it, so stick to the facts.
I'd like to chime in on the referendum issue.
So would I. Go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and again, I apologize for not having a hand to raise. Um, I think that we, I, I don't think that we have time to get this on the March agenda, uh, election. Um, it's a lot. I think that we do need to, you know, it's just, we have a lot going on, and I think this came up, and we all have a lot of thoughts about it, but unless there is some pressing need for one of these, um, I would hate to see it rushed. Uh, I think there is important issues to do, and I do, so I'm, I'm sort of thinking, let's rushing, you know, no, not act in haste, regret, you know, later on. So I would like to see a little more input from the citizens about it. It's, you know, let's, let's, that's all. I have, and I don't, I don't, I don't know what the repercussions would be if we, if we waited. That's the other piece of that.
I have, I happen to agree in regards to that. Um, another thing that I, because I wasn't in attendance at the meeting, um, due to a, a, a health issue the other day. I also wanted to bring forward possibly changing terms from three to four years, um, which Melissa has done some research in regards to other cities doing it, which would save the city money, um, in elections. Um, so that's another thing that I wanted to bring forward for the workshop. Um, and elections. Um, so that's another thing that I wanted to bring forward for the workshop that we have, um, since I wasn't in attendance. And Melissa has done some research in regards to what that would look like. Because like you've said before, Mayor, you get elected, you spend a year learning the job. And then you do your, you're learning the job and then you, or you know, then you're working and getting reelected. And if we have four-year terms, it allows. Elects to just focus on the job at hand and not worry about the next election. So that's, that's just my thoughts on that. Um, Mr. Segret, I see your hand is up.
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, at that meeting, it it wasn't that city staff was going to set up meetings for us. It was that we were gonna go out and set up. Our own meetings and talk to our own constituents. Um, I do have mine scheduled. It's on the eighteenth at the Beach Club. Um, and I will be getting that notice out via social media, email, et cetera.
Next week?
Uh, yeah, the eighteenth, yep, um, to District Four. Um, you know, having questions about how this all works, I would encourage my colleague to speak with staff. They're very good at answering questions. Simply sitting there saying you have questions doesn't help. Um, you know, staff was very helpful, um, in the needs that I had in in getting mine, uh, together and scheduled. Um, but, you know, at some point, as an elected, you gotta put your big boy pants on and do stuff for yourself.
Um, I see Jamie's. Hang on, hang on, Jamie, is this in regards to what we're talking about? I see Jamie's hands up.
Uh, yes, uh, as Commissioner Segret just just mentioned, he set his up, uh, Commissioner May also set hers up and. As we said, if you guys can just, as you set them up, if you're gonna have one, just send the information over to Tiana so we can get it on the social and push everything out. Um, because we want to make sure advertising, at least from the city side as well, as much as possible. I know you guys all do your own. Uh, separate social media stuff too, but we want to make sure we push that out from the city side. But as we. You know, Commissioner Segret mentioned, you you gotta set these things up in the locations you would like. Um, and then we we will help any way we possibly can.
Can we make sure on those ads, Jamie, that it's clear that all residents, business owners and visitors are welcome to these meetings, that it's not just exclusive for the district?
Okay.
All public is welcome. I think that that needs to be on there. We want to hear from all the public, just so people don't think it's just for their 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 district.
I have.
Yeah, it would say like a district for, you know, it would put on there, but then everyone welcome or something like that.
Something like that. All, you know, all voices welcome or something. Yes, Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry, I have two things about that. Uh, one is, hold on a minute, um. Anthony, it's the eighteenth. What time you're gonna start? That's the day that we have the unveiling of the plaque. Um, so if you, I don't know what time you're starting. This starts at six o'clock and won't last that long. So if you could make it six thirty. Seven is perfect. Okay, perfect. The other thing I was, um, discussing, because I was talking with Mimi. About, is it, is it a good idea whether it could, you know, sometimes you can do? Is it a good idea if if we attend each other's, as? I think there's more freedom if we're not there. So the sunshine law doesn't, you know, that's just, I just want us to consider whether or not other commissioners. Should go to those meetings to avoid sunshine issues. That's all. Thank you.
Um, I will, I will not attend them just because of that, and I think the optics are important. Um, but I will share the ones that are, the flyers that are out for both, um, Commissioner Segret and Commissioner May. With all of my neighborhood associations and, um, the people in District One to encourage them to attend. Um, to see if I can just, you know, I mean, we don't have to reinvent the wheel and do four or five of them. Um, just encourage people to attend those and give them many, many opportunities to, you know, to have their voices heard. Commissioner McVoy, is your hands up?
Yeah, my hand is up. Um, uh, I had some questions. Um, it's interesting, my recollection from the meeting as far as setting these up is I very specifically asked staff. Whether staff would help set these up and the answer I heard. Maybe I misheard, but the answer I heard was, yes, we will do that. And, um, that was my understanding going forward that, and I see that both of the currently scheduled ones are in city. Uh, buildings, so, um, I need a little clarification. Will I be getting assistance with that or not?
Reach out to staff and tell them where you want it and what day.
Uh, and I've already done that. Um, haven't heard back yet. Um, I would like to address the earlier.
What day, what day did you give the staff? Just so that we don't have so many bookings, just so we have a conflict. What day did you give them?
I didn't give them a date. I asked them to, my recollection, I'd have to go back and look at the email, but I.
Yeah, because Commissioner, I don't have a date or a location that you you requested.
Uh, I requested at the casino. I definitely put that in and I think I left the date open because I knew that there'd be scheduling challenges, so.
But who did you send it to if you didn't send it to Jamie?
I did send it to Jamie.
I'm going, I'm looking now. So, so you want us to select the date in time for you?
Uh, I'm open to that. I mean, I'll, we'll have to work back and forth if, because I have some conflicts, but. Um.
Okay.
Why don't you give him the dates, three or four dates, instead of him going back and forth, say, these are the dates?
That's fine. I'll be happy to do that. Um, at least my blockout dates, um.
Yeah, that'd be helpful if we know what dates you can't, you can't do.
Yep, I'll do that. Um, and then, uh, unrelated to to that, uh, I would like to comment. Um, Commissioner Segret is correct that my comment on, which I believe I stated paid to play. Um, was not a pre-thought out, wasn't something I'd written out in advance, something, wasn't something I'd thought about in advance. It was spontaneous. Because watching the process with the W Motive Project. And hearing all sorts of for months requests for information, concerns from the community. Um, as, as that's basically kind of been stonewalled and, uh, this thing just sort of rolls forward. Without, for instance, uh, a response to the request from the community, hey, put it on the ballot. If you're gonna put things on the ballot, put this project on the ballot, see if there really is support. Watching and seeing the community response and seeing how the commission has responded to it, other than myself. I've been hearing increasingly from the community that, wow, this is really weird. The amount of public funds that are being committed to this. The lack of interest in listening to the community makes people wonder what's going on here. And that was where that spontaneously came out of.
Um, so were you going to apologize?
Apologizing or justifying?
I am simply relating what I'm hearing from the community. A frustration and a questioning of how do you explain what this commission has done? In terms of public funds and and process, ignoring both the unsolicited proposal, ignoring the RFP process. Um. It it leaves people asking questions. I am simply reporting that.
And I will, I'm gonna step in. I have, uh, you know, you have a, you're talking to a people, all right. I talk to people out in the community other than the, a close-knit group of of people that are opposing this and questioning this. And people in my, in the community that I've been speaking without. People I don't know are very excited about the project and looking forward to it. Uh, it it coming into fruition.
And and I speak to people who I don't know. I've mentioned that a number of times from the dais that I hear from people I've never heard of from before. Who are extremely upset at the process and at the, um, you know, what's going forward. So, uh, I'm sure we hear from different people. Um, I do hear from a small number of people who are supportive of the project. I hear from people, certainly I hear from people that I've heard from regularly, of course. Um, but I, that doesn't weigh on me as heavily as people that I don't know. Who are just residents in the community who contact me and say, wow, what's going on with this?
Okay, so, so I I'm gonna, I'm gonna move this over. Anthony's had his hand up for quite some time. Anthony?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, I had, uh, three, three quick things on, um, not, not agenda related. Um, the owner of the T-shirt company is retiring and 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 selling. They have been there over forty years and have been a a a great part of our community. Um, all of our visitors that come love going there. Um, we get gifts for family there. Um, and I know, um, some of us had mentioned to staff that we'd like to do something for them. I would just like to make sure we had consensus to to do something to honor him, um, soon.
Consensus.
Thank you.
And then the, um, one of the other things was, um, I think we've been doing a great job as a commission, getting things done. Um, and we do have a bit of a backlog, um, with, um, ordinances coming forward, um, and and getting throughput. Um, I had mentioned to, uh, Jamie, um, and Troy. That, you know, I would be fine with us if if we could get more out of the the legal team by giving them more funds sooner. I would be in favor of that so that we can get some of these ordinances that have been sitting out there that we've already voted on, um, back to the table for us. Um, so I I would like to, you know, um. Get consensus to to have our legal staff, you know, examine the backlog and see if there's a way. That we can get to some of these sooner. Some, some items have been waiting for for months that we've already voted on.
Anthony, there is, sitting here, I can tell you there are things I've been waiting for years. Um, not a lot happened in the first three years of my tenure, but, um. You know, I think at least you get a list of, a list of what's outstanding. I think Mr. Perry does that. I think he's got a list of things that are outstanding, but I could be wrong.
Let me just say, I have to agree with that. And another thing I'd like to know is if, um, legal could give us, um, a a briefing, one-on-one. Or a closed-door session on the legal pending lawsuits that we have. I feel that we were, um, given a lot of information like ten months ago. Um, in regards to some things were happening and I feel we have, I I know I haven't gotten an update. And just for, um, peace of mind and legalities and financials, I'd like to know where we are with some of those things. So if legal could maybe. Give us an update on our next one-on-ones or in the near future on those pending lawsuits, I would appreciate it. Anthony, do you have something else?
Yes, so, you know, just in closing, you know, Mr. McVoy, thank you for your response, you know, I. Correct me if I'm wrong, I take it as a non-apology. Um, and I would like to remind my colleague that there were legal issues for making false accusations of a crime. Um, against somebody, especially coming from a position of power. And and again, going back to today's environment where words matter and we are seeing violence and targeting against those. Through conflated words, I would just like to say shame on you and I'm disappointed.
Thank you. On that note, I just want to remind all of us, um, that your ethics training needs to be done by the end of the year. We do have one coming up for the City of Lake Worth Beach that's hosted for, by the Palm Beach County League of Cities on October thirty-first on Halloween. At the, um. Beachfront. Property and you can also do it online. Um, Ms. Melissa, I see your hands up.
My hands.
Yeah, but I don't want.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I I want to say I don't want to interrupt you, so.
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to get to the proclamations. I sent everyone. The possible proclamations for October, so I'd have time to have them added to the agenda. Should there be consensus?
Can you read that list again for the record?
Yes. Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, and I guess what I'll do is if there. I'll put them on consent if no one will be there to receive them and then they could always be pulled. Um, and read if, if necessary, we'll just make sure we print them all out. I see the city attorney's hands raised and she might have something more important than this.
Ma'am. No, go ahead, Melissa, finish up.
Okay, um, Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
Yes.
Um, L B T Q Month?
Yes, yes.
Customer Service Week?
Yes.
Florida Climate Week?
Yes.
I only hear one, yes.
Yes.
Okay, international.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Melissa. One, one thing that might be useful for us when we get, get this list is an understanding of. Are there groups asking for it and what is the purpose?
Okay, so the next one will have. Um, information as to whether these are things we've always done or if it's been requested.
Perfect, thank you.
So, all of these have, none of these have been requested. These are all things we've done in the past. Um, they might have been requested like the next one. International E-Waste Day, I believe Commissioner. McVoy requested that last year.
What is it?
What is it?
International E-Waste, like electronic waste, like. People that get rid of their cellphones every year, their computers, that's E-Waste, Electronic Waste Day.
To my knowledge, I I mean, I think it's appropriate to raise awareness of it and S W, uh, Solid Waste Authority. Asked us and they have specific separate recol- uh, collections for it. Um, I don't believe I asked for it in the past or I don't remember, but, um, I don't know that we need a day for it, but, uh. Maybe I did, who knows?
You did.
I I didn't request it for this year, but, because I thought.
No, I just went through the ones that we did last year to include them in the list. So I will do all of them except International E-Waste Day. Um, Commissioner McVoy had requested Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Which is actually a national holiday at this point on the.
Uh, actually. No, no longer. It's going back to Columbus Day in order to recognize. Going back to recognizing American icons.
Huh? Say that again?
So, Indi- Indigenous Peoples' Day is no more. We're going back to federally, going back to Columbus Day in order to start. Recognizing American icons.
This sounds like a political football. I I don't even like.
Yeah. I'm, I think it should be Leaf Erickson Day, if it's gonna be.
Also, I I I don't think we should be just rehashing a day that's sitting on a calendar. Um, for, you know, what purpose does it serve to our city? And that, that's something that I'd like to see on on the next one as well. What purpose does this serve for our city? Um, because just simply looking at the holidays on a calendar and going, hey, let's have. Recognition for Hot Dog Day or or this day or that day doesn't serve a purpose.
What's that even hot dogs?
And I think you're, and I think you're overstating him, Mr. Segret. I mean, most of these things originally had been requested. We get requests for other things all the time. Um, you know, and they are, and and a statement, you know, it's, it's, I don't have a problem with it.
And I have a problem with that, given, uh, Commissioner Segret's a big problem that we have probably about a fourth of our population. Which are in fact indigenous peoples. And, uh, that's pretty disrespectful to say, you know, what about a hot dog day? You're sending a clear message to how you feel about a fourth of your population that you're sworn to celebrate.
Not true. If if you want to continue to throw false accusations, please do so.
That is not a false accusation. You stated hot dog and you seem to be ignoring.
If you, if you want to simply rehash what was a national holiday, I fail to see the purpose of that.
Okay.
That is what I'm saying. So let me give you a better example. Should we have a proclamation declaring Thanksgiving? Should we have a proclamation declaring Presidents' Day? I don't think so. I happen to be a very patriotic person. Presidents' Day is a good day. Fourth of July, also a good day. Independence Day. Should we have a proclamation?
And we do things for, for many of those.
You don't think so. It has nothing to do with my opinion of our indigenous population, sir. And I would invite you again to stop levying false accusations.
I'm merely repeating what you said. I was not aware that the Indigenous Peoples' Day had been reversed back to Columbus Day. That was why I thought, given our population, that would be a reasonable thing to add to that list.
Well, when you, uh, wrote that in your email, we don't have a proclamation, so I was trying to find a proclamation. Which is when I found the news article about that. Okay, so we have October seventh meeting. There are only three for October twenty-first. Florida City Government Week. Uh, Guatemala Day and Red Ribbon Week.
Uh, I don't know what Red Ribbon Week is, but the Guatemalan Day.
The week where it's.
Heart.
Related to drug awareness and you wear a red nose. Oh, no, that's Red Nose Day.
Yeah, I think it's the heart thing, but I could be wrong. And I have no problem with, I think the Guatemalan Day, and I think that sort of speaks to, you know, if if we could do Guatemalan Day. And I I do agree with Mr. McVoy that we have a large indigenous population. They should be, you know, there's no harm in 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 saying they're here and and, you know. We honor them, but, um.
I have no problem with Guatemalan Day either. Um, Red Ribbon Day, if we don't even know what it is, I don't think we should have.
Well, all right, but I think if, I think if we find out that it's something of import, then we can do it.
I will look.
Doesn't do any harm.
And as long as we keep, if there's nobody coming to get them and we're keeping on consent agenda, I think that that's important. Um, you know, I I have noticed that a lot of the cities that do proclamations. They frame the proclamation, they give it framed to the entity that comes forward. Um, you know, that costs us time and money and resources and staff. So I think if we can really streamline it down and say. You know, in consent, we recognize, but as far as the mayor reading them, us doing a presentation. I think that that needs to be for those who are gonna come in attendance and and have representation.
That's pretty much been our practice. That's pretty much been our practice recently, I think, actually.
But I think that we need to keep it that way because last month there was a motion to take one out of consent and there was nobody even there to receive it, so. So it sounds like you have consent, Melissa. Do you have, are you clear?
Thank you.
Ms. Elizabeth, I see your hands up.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to, um, touch on the requests from our office. And we're happy to accommodate absolutely bringing updates and making sure that the assignments that you have assigned to us are getting done in a timely manner. So if there are things that you are, feel like you're waiting for, please let me know. And I can give you an update on those or, um, make sure that we're pushing them to the front.
Thank you.
But Elizabeth, let me just, again, I hate to just keep popping in like this, but, um. There might be ones that we just, you know, it might not be in the forefront of our mind, but. So if we could have a complete list, like ones we remember, but there might be some that we don't remember and I would hate to have them not addressed.
Agreed.
Um, I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow, uh, Saturday, not tomorrow, yeah, Saturday. At the Northwest Ballfields is our major league event, um, major league baseball event, um, pitch, throw, run. And this is going to be something great for our city. Uh, I'm a huge baseball fan, as some may know. And during preseason and the beginning of season, I kept seeing this ad for Major League Baseball, bring Major League Baseball to your town. And it's where they honor and let kids showcase their talents, um, in regards to baseball and softball. And I want to say thank you to Tiana and staff for applying and getting us, um, we were chosen as one of the host cities for Major League Baseball this year, which I think is amazing. Um, the first pitch is at nine. I did see that Tiana sent us all a timeline. I know that the mayor will not be able to attend and I don't think Mimi will be there either. Um, I plan on being there eight forty-five. So anybody that can come out and support this, these are the, these are the great wins. You know, we invested in our, in our baseball fields. And I'm really proud and happy that our city was chosen for this event. And I think Tiana said we have over sixty kids who have signed up for it. So that's amazing. So if you can come out, please do, um, and just show support. And I want to say thank you to staff for following through and, and I'm glad that we got chosen. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I just had a couple of things. I was waiting for everyone else to go, so I didn't know if, um, Commissioner McVoy and Commissioner Segretz had.
Uh, well, we only have seven minutes, so why don't you, we haven't had the floor yet.
Okay, uh, well, you just covered the baseball. I was going to go through that. Um, you guys all should have also, uh, received the active shooter training that, uh, came out. It was an email that came out, um.
Due to.
Uh, there's two different dates and four different times. It's, it's pretty timely, but we seem to be doing this every couple of years, but, um. It'd be nice for, for you guys, if you can attend one of those too, to kind of see what, uh, and PBSO is putting that on. So I wanted to mention that, um, Commissioner Segretz, you mentioned, uh, possibly doing something for the, um, T-shirt company. Uh, that's already in the works. That will be complete, uh, midday Tuesday and be ready for you guys for the meeting on Tuesday. So that's already taken care of. Uh.
Hey, Jamie, when is that tenant, um, training, those two dates for the tenant training? The landlord tenant training? I wanted to mention that, but I left it on my desk.
Oh gosh, I, I don't have it pulled up.
Barry has those dates.
Can I pop in on that one? Can I pop in on that? Um, I love that we're doing that. My, I sent an email to, to Jamie. I think, well, I would think it would be good if we recorded it. I would like to see proof that if you get a rental license, you've done that training. So like when we have to do trainings and we have to answer a question at the end, I would like to see that incorporated so that no landlord can say, I didn't know that. Um, because, uh, you know, so that they, they don't get their license until they've completed the training. Because I think that'll clear up a lot of things in the future.
Great idea.
I agree.
Jamie, go ahead. You had more?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, we received an email this morning from PBSO asking if they could actually push their presentation from this Tuesday's meeting to October seventh. Because I guess, uh, what did he say? Something with the, um, some of the data they were trying to pull. Uh, so I wanted to bring that up, but if we are now going to see about them, adding them to the agenda the very next night, maybe we should combine all that.
Makes sense.
If that's okay with you guys.
Mr. McVoy, Mr. Segretz?
I consent.
And that's their quarterly report?
That, that would be correct, yes.
Uh, my only concern would be time, um. Maybe there's some way they could give us the, uh, and, and I think the proposal was to add it to the October seventh. And the special meeting, I believe, was the October sixth.
Correct. So the email that said, uh, due to gathering further data and statistics, they were requesting to move it to the October seventh meeting.
Right. I don't have a problem with moving it. I would suggest for time, I am concerned that for time with that one. I would say let's do their presentation on the seventh as they're proposing. And have our discussion of, because, you know, we've, we've seen lots of the quarterly reports. It's probably not going to be hugely different than other ones. Um, so to have our discussion is, is not dependent on having that information. So for time.
I think, my personal opinion is in regards to, you know, their time. Why have them come two days in a row? I would be in favor of them doing both at once, instead of taking the officers off and, and bringing them to City Hall two times in a row. I think that if we can do it both on the sixth, but that's just my opinion.
I would agree.
It's our biggest contractor. I think they can spare, you know, the time.
Miss, Miss, um, were the mayor still here?
Might be on the plane or.
No, I'm, I'm still here.
Okay, great. What, what say you?
About the, um, well. So are you, are you proposing that we have the sheriff's office in one meeting, talking about both things?
Yes, instead of them coming back to back.
Well, I think if people are interested in the sheriff's office, it would be more convenient for our citizens as well to not have to come to two meetings. You know, to, to do it in one meeting, then they, our citizens can come and find out what's going on if they're interested.
That's a good point. Um, Barry, I see your hands up. Hello, Mr. Barry?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Just wanted to, it's, uh, to comment on two things. Uh, the training is September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at nine thirty, eleven thirty. And a second train will be held on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at five thirty to seven thirty. But one of the things for the, uh, Sheriff's Department, this time, they were going to also provide a update on that mental health. Uh, they're, the work they're doing in mental health that, uh, Commissioner McVoy brought up. So that was going to be part of their presentation.
Again, and, and which I'm grateful that that presentation will be there. I'm again concerned about the time. I would do the informational stuff on the seventh. And our community discussion of, of the contract on the, and, and, you know, how it all is working. I would do that as a separate discussion on the sixth.
I happen to agree with the mayor. I think if we, we want people to come have a, have a conversation and listen to PBSO that we should do it on one day instead of breaking it up. Mr. Segretz, I see your hands up.
Yep, very quick. I got information that Red Ribbon Week is Drug Prevention Week and we do have citizenry interested in receiving and having that, um, be an official proclamation.
Then let's, let's add it. I support adding it. Could I get clarification?
Mr. McVoy, can you let me call on people? Ms. Melissa's had her hand up, please.
I've had my hand up for almost ten minutes.
You've had a majority of the conversation. Please let Melissa go.
I just wanted to let, uh, the commission know that Wendy Link, the supervisor for elections, will also be at the October sixth meeting. Um. I can have her just answer questions from the commission rather than do a presentation. Um, I've relayed a couple of questions to her. If you want to send me questions. So that she would be prepared to answer them, um, rather than, I don't think we really need a presentation on elections. I think it's more of an informational thing that might also help in the charter, um, discussion.
I think that's, that's wise. Mr. McVoy, can you please keep your hand up until I call upon you? Mr. Brown, I see your hands up, sir.
Yeah, I just had two other really quick things. Um, I had spoken with each one of you individually on, um, the city sponsoring two specific events. One being the Arms of Hope, uh, event at the ballroom, which is October third, uh, eleven AM to eleven PM. And the other was, uh, for the children, uh, twenty-fifth anniversary, which was Friday, November seventh, from nine AM to eleven PM. So it seems that the consensus was you guys are all fine with the city actually sponsoring those two events. And I just wanted to remind you, before we talk to them, I just wanted to make sure that we're still all on the same page. This is separate and apart from the conversation that's upcoming on the use of the gymnasium and the, uh, the Osborne Community Center and everything.
Yes, I concur. I agree. And, um, I think it's important that, you know, you and I spoke about it's letting people know that this isn't just a one-off. You know, we sponsored the Stonewall Ball last year as a commission. We've sponsored Day of the Dead. And these are the two events this time that we're going to sponsor, um, as a city. Mr. McVoy, do you have something regards to that?
Uh, I do, but I, I'm concerned about the time. I wanted to get clarification because I heard three members of the commission. Say that they thought we should not go forward with the March elections. I heard, and perhaps my hearing is bad. But I heard the mayor say, I think we should seriously consider not going forward with, with referenda in March. I heard the vice mayor say she agreed and I agree. So do we have consensus that we are not moving forward with that?
We're, we're not, we're not voting right now. First of all, there's not a commissioner, there's not a commissioner here and this wasn't part of our conversation. It wasn't. I think that, you know, we have the workshop coming up and that would be the time for us to make that conversation and make those decisions.
Did I hear correctly or did I hear incorrectly? Because we've had consensus on any number of things at this meeting. That's what we've asked for is consensus. That's how we do it.
Not on something like this, Mr. McVoy. This is something that's, that's got to have all of our input and it should be done in the, in the public eye where we hear from the public, in my opinion. Mr. Brown?
I had one other thing. So we had a meeting with the school board. I've just been talking with Erica Whitfield and everything. Um, I spoke with Jared, our lobbyist, and we're looking at possibly doing a joint appropriation between the district and the city. Um, Representative Tendrich and Mark Bernard both agreed they would carry it. So just kind of giving you guys a heads up that we're going to start this, this process and I'll, I'll discuss further in the one-on-ones. And that's all I have.
Perfect. It is, uh, ten oh two. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'm sorry, no motions at workshops.
All right, everybody. Thank you. See you this, uh, everybody have a safe weekend.
Think my plane is delayed four hours.